I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for November 21st, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Beeter.
Hall?
Here.
Little?
Schwartz?
Here.
Chelka?
Here.
Layland?
Here. Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on our actions today? Thank you. Would you please join us for the allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received, just proposed or amended?
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Please step to the mic and give your name and address. Yes, please, at the podium. Thank you.
My name is Tim Youngblut, 68, 30 East Worship Road. I'm here to ask to be put on the agenda for next week because I have concerns with the Blackhawk County zoning administrator, who is not, in my opinion, is not following the rules laid out in the ES Sensitive grounds for floodplain permitting. And I also would like to be put on the agenda for the vacation of Youngblut Road. And all I need is for you guys to say, yes, I'm on the agenda next week.
Is there anything you could submit to us as far as both these topics, I think? Something like sending an email? I don't know if you've done that.
I don't have email.
Okay. I was just thinking.
I called you last week and talked to you, and I called Tom Little and talked to him, and Tom Little gave me quite a... He talked to the board administrator, and he basically said, I need to hire a lawyer and to prove my point, but the state ombudsman said I should talk to you all in front of the board before I... And then she'll take it up after that.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to talk to the administrator or any of our planning and zoning folks that we contract with?
I, uh... Yes, I did talk... I called Seth and asked him why my neighbor did not need a permit for building a structure with three cast cement and three loads of gravel to build a ramp to a building that was all grass before, never was a parking area or anything. And he sent me a letter back saying that no permit was required. I read the ES Sensitive land, Blackhawk County's charter for zoning, and it says right in there, permits needed for any man-made disturbance of ground in the floodway for structures, buildings, grading, mining, excavation. I called you, and I told you, I thought that all three of those things fell in with this ramp they built. I never heard back from you.
No.
Little says... Seth says that I'm out of my mind. I really don't know what I'm talking about. So I'm... I want to bring it in front of the full board so you can all read. It's on page 65 of the code. There's like four pages. He says it's legal to gravel, grade in your... in the zone. It doesn't say anywhere in there that grading is allowed without a permit.
Okay. Well, Tim, you're right. You did call, and it was just that was I was asking if you had something in writing to submit to the entire board to kind of give them the information before the meeting, but they said it...
All I have with me is the letter that he sent me, the showing that says that he doesn't need a permit for that. And I'm disputing the fact that he's saying it doesn't need a permit when the zoning boards, whatever you want to call the charter, says all the things that he did need a permit. This is not the first time this has happened.
Well, that's all right. We can put it on the agenda and have that discussion and have the folks here from planning and zoning. So we can certainly have get those questions resolved or at least get down into rid of the problem, I guess, that you seem to be having, but we will. It wasn't that we weren't. I think you said to me you wanted it... You want it resolved and/or you'd be here for the meeting, and it was like, well, if we could resolve it before today.
I tried to get on the... I called the secretary of Blackhawk County, your board here, and I was an hour late Thursday, so they told me I could not get on the agenda.
Well, you can make the request, but a board member has to approve it for the agenda.
Yes, she told me that, a board member.
Okay.
So that's why I'm here today, ask the board members to put me on the agenda.
I thought you would be, so, okay. Well, thank you.
So I will be on the agenda next Tuesday.
Well, I guess the board can decide. We can get back in touch with you, I think, if you are on the agenda for next week, I guess, and see if that's what the board wishes to do.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone else to speak on public comments? Anyone on Zoom? Mr. Staff? Okay. We'll move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed. Ms. Wiedner?
So moved.
Oh, second. Thank you.
Good morning, board. Our total bill payment today is $422,333.45, and that includes payments to... for election officials of $66,650.15, and Peters Construction for our jail lobby renovations, we're making a payment of $143,657.55. And payments from the 60-40 fund are $4,908.40. Everything appears to be in order. Anybody have any questions today?
Thank you. Hearing no questions, please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer.
Morning.
For roads update, all roads are in good or fair condition today. Our mechanics are busy putting on snow equipment, including the front plows and the wings. We are wrapping up our ditch cleanouts for the year, and then Griffin and others are busy getting those seeded before the winter sets in. And then we have gotten quite a bit of brush cut throughout the county in the past several weeks. Can I answer any questions right now? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with an update?
Great. Morning, board.
Good morning.
Caitlin, American Public Health. I just have a quick update. We do have some COVID response funds that rolled over from Iowa Department of Health and Human Services. We were expecting the funds to roll over, but the contract actually didn't come in until late October, so it kind of delayed a couple of the things that we were planning on, kind of working on. And one of those was to get some quotes for wayfinding within the Pinecrest Building to do some digital signage. We were able to work together for the external sign, and we have about $90,000, I think, $93,000 that we are... that is dedicated to technology upgrades, so it needs to be used on technology upgrades. We're going to finish up the conference rooms that are in progress and then have some funds that we need to do some training with, with our Microsoft Office. And then we have a little bit left over that we can put towards wayfinding, but I wanted to make sure we get it in front of you all to see if that's something that you would want to do. We do have a quote that just came in yesterday from Conference Technologies, and we're working to get that to Rory and Al so they can take a look at it, but it just came in yesterday, so they haven't had a chance to look at it yet. But I wanted to at least bring that up and make sure that if we proceed, we're going in the right direction.
I think it's a great thing, and there are digital signs that can be...
Correct. They would be like, you know, similar to these that are in this room, like TV screen type of signs.
Now, your board, has they approved?
We haven't taken it to our board yet.
Okay. So I was gonna say, we're very early in the process.
Yep. It'll go at our November 29th meeting.
Okay. So maybe like December 5th or something for us?
Yep. Sure. Yep. If you're favorable.
Yep.
All right. We'll proceed. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other updates? Anyone on Zoom that wants to do an update? Seeing none, we'll move on to the minutes approved for November 14th, 2023, and the special sessions that were held November 8th, 15th, and the 16th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The minutes are approved. Item six is the consent agenda. The following items are acted upon by a single resolution unless someone wishes to pull something off for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item seven is other business. This is a resolution that the agreement between Blackhawk County and Iowa State Association of Counties regarding the agreement to participate in the ISAC HIPAA program be approved, and the board chair be authorized to sign as recommended by Amanda Pheasimire, HR Director, and Al UIT Director.
So moved.
Second.
Is there anyone... I don't know if you want to speak to this or not. Yeah.
Thank you, Amanda Pheasimire, HR Director. So not a major, you know, discussion here, but we utilize ISAC for our HIPAA compliance have for a long time, and this is just kind of getting that contract back before you all. It is an annual contract that will, you know, bring forward likely in June or July of each year, but we were a little behind with it. But we're still getting the services, and we appreciate the assistance with HIPAA compliance, so.
And I think you said in an email, it looked like it was $1,750.
Roughly, yeah. Mm-hmm. Yep. So we'll split that between Al and I. He's the privacy officer, and HR is the HIPAA officer. It helps us with the health department, you know, VA, auditors, anybody that comes in in contact with HIPAA-related information, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We had a motion, a second on this one?
Yes.
Resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Chelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item B, motion to approve the personnel requisition submitted for a road foreman in full-time replacement with a start date, excuse me, no sooner than January 1st, 2024, as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Kathy, did you want to comment?
Yeah. As noted, our longtime maintenance supervisor is retiring after about 20 years with the county. He'll be retiring at the end of December. We would like to replace him. We are changing the name to a road foreman. I would like to do that, and this is a very critical position in the winter months, especially our superintendent and the road foreman. They are in charge of callouts, so they're the ones who are working the... getting up extra early in the mornings, driving the roads, and then calling out employees to ask them to come in and plow or put down sand and salt, depending on the road conditions. So we would just like to backfill this position no sooner than starting January 2nd.
Thank you, Kathy. So moved and seconded. This is a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item C, motion to approve the personnel requisition submitted for an administrative aid full-time replacement with a start date no sooner than January 8th, 2024, as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Want to comment at all?
Yeah. This is our main point of contact for the public. This is the individual who answers our phones, but they also do our payroll, our accounts receivable, accounts payable. This position has formerly been an account specialist. We have been... We have had some difficulties keeping the employee. Right now, we have a full-time temporary person who will be with us here through the second week in December... Excuse me, the second week in January. We would like to upgrade this position by one step to administrative aid. One, we've been consulting with human resources, have looked at other positions in the county similar to this, and we feel that by raising it approximately 90 cents an hour, that this will help us in our recruitment and hopefully with our retention of this... in this position.
Any questions for Kathy? This is a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Kathy. Item D, a motion to rescind the May 16th, 2023 acceptance of proposal of commercial recreational projects for the design and construction of four ADA playgrounds and county parks.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Shree. Thank you.
I'm just here in... in, I mean, Mike's absence, if anybody has any questions about this.
Would you recap it? I was gonna say, just a little bit, I think, for the public or what we're doing with rescinding. If you don't mind.
Funded with ARPA funds. It was approved for $240,000. We did an RFP. We've got a vendor online, but what we're finding and working with them is the cost of things has went up significantly, and we're having to make significant changes in the scope to get it in budget, which effectively changes the scope, which then our competitive bidding wasn't really fair then because the others didn't bid on the same scope. So we'd like to rescind and then restructure the RFP and try it again.
How many bids... Do you remember how many bids there were the first time?
We only had one the first time.
Only had the one.
And we're questioning now if the way the... the way it was written in the scope is why, because others may have known they couldn't quite fit in that budget. So we're going to restructure it and try it again.
Do we have a concern that rescinding the bid has a negative impact with the one entity that did submit a bid?
So I think that we can't predict whether it's going to make them negative in terms of submitting another bid. I think at this point, though, the decision was made by the people who've been in touch with that bidder that because things continually change, I think they're trying to track different bidders. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
Yeah.
And I think that's what the vendor would think fair, too, were reversed, and they weren't the only person that were bidding on it, because when the scope changes, then that changes for everyone, not just the one engaged. So, thank you. Do you have any idea of how long you think it'll take for...
I think we could probably be back out for a January bid due date.
Okay. Thank you.
And do you think that the... that the budget for this is enough to get to accomplish this?
I think it is. What we did include in the first RFP is that all installation, site prep, everything, surfacing, everything was on them. And some of that was changing as we got through these discussions with like us having to do some of the site prep. Well, that's a significant change. So we're going to look at some of those kind of things when we rebuild the RFP and see if there's some things that we can in fact do that in-house that would bring that overall cost down and within budget, within the 240.
Okay.
Any other questions? This is a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight is a work session. We're going to discuss Iowa Code, Chapter 311, which is regarding special assessment districts as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer.
Good morning, board. I think we're all familiar with the concept of assessment, but because this is a new concept for us here at Blackhawk County, I wanted to just speak specifically more about secondary road assessment districts. I have been speaking with our attorney, Mike Trynan, about this a couple of months ago, and I felt it was time to bring some information to you, you all. So I'm just... I have some slides here. Most of them are directly from the Code of Iowa, Chapter 311, that I thought we just walked through some pertinent parts of the Code of Iowa, just so we're all on the same page as to what this secondary road assessment district really is. So the first portions of the code do provide for residents, homeowners, county residents to submit a petition to allow for some type of improvement, grading, draining, bridging, placing aggregate, surfacing, paving, some type of assessment. It does say, the code does say that a district can be no more than half a mile wide. The assessment is determined by the Board of Supervisors, and it's a shared... a sharing arrangement of costs, sharing arrangement. The board can set that assessment percentage, and we're... the board says that the residents will pay at least 50%. They can pay no more than 50%, or they can pay up to 100%. That is determined by you at a public hearing. Then the Code of Iowa goes into some descriptions about what is required in the petition, who can petition, and it basically talks about the types of improvement. It should be described in the petition briefly, just a few sentences, for example. Doesn't have to be a lengthy description, but that should be described in the secondary road assessment district petition, and then it should be signed by at least 50% of the homeowners, landowners along that road to be assessed in the assessment district. I wanted to be able to see this improvement by private funds. In this portion of the code, it talks about... It goes into some detail about the process, and it says that by October 1st of any year, the citizens must submit the petition. The board considers that the engineer gives an estimate, and if we are directed to... if the engineer is directed to... the assessment is agreed, the engineer is directed to put this into our plan for the next year. So our secondary road plan, this would be put into it in the next year. It does go on to talk about another... Another option is that if owners of the lands included in the secondary road assessment district subscribe and deposit with the county treasurer an amount less... not less than 50% or a greater portion as provided in the petition, the board shall not establish the secondary road assessment district, but shall accept the donation in lieu of an assessment. So if the citizens are willing to not be assessed and put this money into the treasurer, give it to the treasurer of the county, then they... an assessment does not have to be collected. An assessment district does not have to be set up.
And that would be of those, if it's the 50% or whatever, at least the 50% that have stated they wanted to do this?
Right. Those people are still... They've still signed the petition. All has been agreed to as far as what the improvement is, what is the cost. The residents say, we would like to pay for it upfront. We don't want to be assessed over the next 10 years, for example. We would like to pay for it upfront.
And not everyone would have to participate. I mean...
According to the code, not everyone. Correct.
Just those who wanted to. Okay.
Well, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah. According to the code, people will... all would be assessed.
Assessed, yeah.
Assessed, but not everyone... In this case, not everyone would have to participate in a contribution.
Yes. Okay. Yeah. The assessment would...
However, that... In looking around Iowa, I'll talk about this a little bit more. However, that money is collected, and it arrives in the pot to pay for the project or that share of the project, then that is considered going forward. That is considered enough to go forward. The code does talk about what is required of the engineer. The engineer has to go out and look at the road, has to come up with a cost estimate, determine what type of improvement is to be done, determine a cost estimate, and then put that cost in writing down and present it to the board. And then the code does go into some guidance about the public hearing, and it's very much like any other typical public hearing. However, I wanted to bring your attention to the portion that talks about appearance. The appearance of any interested party, either in writing or in person, shall be deemed a full appearance. Only interested parties shall have the right to appear in such proceedings. All persons so appearing shall state for whom they appear. So in this case, only interested parties are those people who are actually included in the assessment district. So it's not necessary for the board to take considerations from people that live three miles away who may not like this assessment, for example. You only have to take into consideration those interested parties, and those would be people who are actually involved in this secondary road assessment district. If you want to say anything at all, Mr. Trynan, please feel free to at any time.
No, you're getting it all correct so far.
So that's basically what the code presents us with. There are more subsections to this, but I feel like that's the pertinent details for our discussion today. I wanted to talk just briefly about what some other counties around Iowa have done. This isn't a very widely used provision of the Code of Iowa. Lynn County is the one who's using it most. They have some very good examples of this on their website. They have several pages devoted to the secondary road assessment districts accessible from their website. Currently, they have about six to eight of these districts in place where they've gone through the whole procedure. If you look on their website, the engineer's report includes the petition. They have a nice examples of the engineer's report. It includes a map. It shows you all the parcels included in the secondary road assessment district. Lynn County has said that they have split their assessment dis... assessments evenly. It is not determined by assessed value or frontage or the use of the current use of the land. They have decided that they are going to treat everybody equally in these... in their districts. He did caution me that the hearing is not a conversation with the neighbors. It is for the board to decide what that percentage will be, to hear from the engineer about what the project is, and then to hear from the interested parties, those people in the special assessment, proposed special assessment district. And only interested parties may speak, as I mentioned to you in the code.
But is it... Shouldn't there be at some point, not articulated in the process, but it just seems wrong that people are prohibited from speaking on a topic where the government's involved in making a decision?
I really don't have a good answer for that. Go ahead, Mr. Trynan.
I think that the reason is simply to streamline it to those affected people. It's kind of like, you know, I don't go to Montana to speak about how they regulate the use of their public lands or something like that. I mean, I'm trying to think of an extreme example, but I... This is speculation on my part, but I would guess the purpose behind the statute being worded the way that it is is simply to limit it to those people directly impacted by it. Now, I suppose the argument could be there that, you know, if you pass one in one district, is that going to be the first domino of many to fall and all of that, and that may interest all others in the county. But regardless, the code is worded the way it's worded.
Just makes me uncomfortable the way it's worded, quite frankly.
Well, and, you know, I could see for a place or a position to take a public comment section, but unrelated to the voting or the going forward, it seems like with people that are providing funding for it, doesn't seem like that would be way quite the same, but I understand what you're saying.
And it... I mean, obviously, it's code. There's nothing we can do about it, but I just wanted to express my concerns.
Public comments.
But then the way our rules are written, you can't... Now, if it's on the agenda...
Well, I could speak other time. We have to do a hearing, and there's a process... Or maybe you're going to get to that, but there is the process for doing some of this or going forward with it?
Yeah. I'll touch on that a little bit.
That's what I meant. We didn't need to, yeah. I didn't want to get you out of order.
But the hearing portion would be limited, though.
Yeah.
I like that we can do this.
But we can post it.
But I just... My concern.
Yeah.
So a few other counties I've talked to or researched, Potawatomi also has a process set up, but it has not been widely used. And then Washington County, excuse me, there have been several articles in the newspaper in the past several years about them, a private developer wanting to use this process in Washington County, but they have... Washington County has not moved forward. In Potawatomi County, back to them again, they have used this process two or three times, but in the end, it turned out that all of the people contributed money. There was enough money received and placed into a pot, and they just waited until they was enough money received and placed into a pot, and they just waited until they had enough money accumulated to pay for the share before they moved forward. No one, no assessment district has been set up in Potawatomi County either. So it's, apparently Lynn County is the only county who's successfully set up several special road assessment districts in the county.
Be interesting to hear if they've had anybody contact them that was opposed to the project. I would think any of those six or-
I could, I can find out more information on that.
Thanks. And if they did, how they handled it, if there was some-
So the reason I'm telling you about all of this today is we have received a petition, a proposal from some residents on Big Woods Road and Mount Vernon Road. And I was going to put a map in here, but I didn't, didn't get that done. But so Mount Vernon Road goes east-west off of Waverly Road. Both of these roads are directly north of the city of Cedar Falls. In fact, Big Woods Road, the first quarter, eighth of a mile of it, is seal coated by the city of Cedar Falls. And then you drive out of the city limits and then you're in Blackhawk County. Historically, the, Big Woods Road has been seal coated by, there are probably 20 homes on that road. It's historically been seal coated for a number of years by those, those private citizens. They would chunk off their three or 400 linear feet and they would have it seal coated. This has been going on for many years and with good success. There's good soils over there. It's well draining. The seal coat seems to hold out very well in most of that mile. And then as you go east-west, turn the corner going west on Mount Vernon, a portion of that had been seal coated as well. So in 2018, the residents got together and they, they wanted to do something about the dust because there were some sections that weren't seal coated. And in 2018, we, they had a public meeting or a meeting with themselves, and I attended it. I told them that I would let them, give them a permit to, if they individually got permits to seal coat all the frontage of those entire two miles, or excuse me, 1.5 miles. It's two miles if you include the Cedar Falls portion. So they got, they were successful, they got all their permits. Since that time, they have banded together, they have spent their own money, they've collectively spent over $100,000 is what they've told me. They have seal coated it two out of three times, depending on which, where you are on the portion of the road. And they would now like, now it's time to seal coat it again because with a seal coat, you have to get several years, two to three to four years of layers on top of it before it can be considered, you know, strong enough to hold most traffic, and you don't have to reseal coat it possibly for another two or three years. Once you get several layers of structure built up, you can, you know, that's what you need to go for, to make it permanent. It's just subsequent layers being built up. They would, they would now like to, us to take that over. And they would like to form a secondary road assessment district to do that. They are proposing that they come forward with their share of the money so that there, so it really doesn't have to be an assessment district. They would just like us to participate. They would like to pay a share determined by you, and then we would take it into our seal coat program after that. Just to let you know, seal coating costs Blackhawk County approximately $30,000 a mile. So it is a relatively low-cost improvement. This type of improvement they are consider, they're considering is not, it's not about paving it in asphalt or putting concrete curb, and they simply would like us to incorporate this, these one and a half miles into our seal coat program. So I've got another slide here about considering this, for you all to consider this, and what we have considered in our office as we've thought about this. So of course, this would be the first consideration of a secondary road assessment district in the county. It is a relatively low-cost improvement. It would be under $60,000. They would, they would, if approved by you all, they would contribute at least 50% of those, or excuse me, 50 to, 50%, if that's required by what you determine. They would like to pay their share upfront. They don't want to be, have any long-term assessments going, you know, one, two, or three to 10 years. They would just like to pay, much as they have done over the past two to three years, to continue with the seal coating. And then just a little bit about the engineering, some of our considerations in our office. So we do have a seal coat program. We have currently 18 miles of seal coat in Blackhawk County. That's a relatively small amount for, for many counties. You know, we have a lot of asphalt pavement in this county, so we just don't have a lot of seal coat. Since I've been here, we have not incorporated, we have not seal coated any new miles of seal coat. In fact, we've gotten rid of approximately two miles of seal coat when we seal coated Turkey Foot Heights. And that's a small subdivision. Our seal coated roads consist primarily of smaller, of subdivisions, rural subdivisions in Blackhawk County, such as Washburn, Raymar, previously Turkey Foot Heights. We have Terry Road, which is south of Waterloo. So we have about five to seven small subdivisions that are seal coated. And that makes up probably two-thirds of our seal coated miles. The other half or two, or third are just miscellaneous miles throughout the county that have traditionally been seal coated for a number of years now, and they've been seal coated since I've been here, and I really don't know the rationale for why they were included. They've just been included in our seal coat program. Seal coating roads, the traffic levels on those vary anywhere from, our highest seal coated level of roads is, is on Barnes Ferry down in the La Porte area. That is 340 vehicles per day. We recently seal coated Simon's Road. I'm sorry, what I told you wasn't exact, I forgot. We did seal coat Simon's Road at the request of the city of Cedar Falls. And I can go into more of that, but that is 320 vehicles per day. Big Woods Road is 190 vehicles per day. It's right outside the city limits of Cedar Falls, so it gets quite a bit of traffic. Our lowest seal coated road is Miller Creek, Miller Creek Road off of 218, going west for one mile, and that is 50 vehicles per day. So we have the whole gamut of traffic volumes on our seal coated roads. Here's a map of our current seal coated roads. Like I told you, most, or about half of it is our smaller subdivisions. Here's Washburn, Raymar, Dewar, Morrow Heights is a subdivision. But then we have just a few odd miles of road that have been seal coated, like Gersh Road, Jepson Road, and those are, those are more rural. There's not nearly as many homes on Jepson and McEvitt and Gersh Road as there are on Mount Vernon and Big Woods Road that we're considering. So we've, we've discussed this quite a bit. We really don't think that this would set a precedent by incorporating this one and a half miles into our seal coat program. We really don't set, think it would set a precedent. These people have been wanting to help themselves over the past five years. They've helped themselves. They've expended quite a bit of money on their own, on their own desk control. And I would request that this be allowed to move ahead for a public hearing, at which you can make the determination of if we should take this up as a secondary road assessment district. That would be the next step, setting up a public hearing, or if you would like to have another meeting to talk about it before a public hearing, or I would ask that you consider this and discuss how we should, how we can move forward. Can I answer questions?
In Lynn County, so they had the six to eight?
Yes.
Have they always requested the same thing since they wanted to stay kind of uniform in what they were, how they were doing the districts? I assume that they have a percentage that they-
So I haven't looked at, in detail, at all six to eight examples of what's out on the Lynn County website, but they, they are more substantial improvements. Many of them are asphalt overlays, and some of them are, for example, and I can either point you to this website or I can make you copies or-
No, that's fine, Kathy. I was just curious. And then you said too, as far as, you didn't think this would start a precedent for us. Is that because we haven't had other neighborhoods do the similar requests or the, the response in paying for some of the services? So this is why, you think?
Mostly, we just haven't had, we thought about what else is out in the county. And for example, in this proposal, we're talking about seal coating. There's not many other miles that have this many homes on it that are, that have collectively worked together to seal coat their roads. Seal coating doesn't hold up on every mile of road. We've been, and I tell residents this when they come for a permit and they're paying for it themselves, or that a seal coat can deteriorate over one winter or over one spring in particular. So there are some roads it's just not suitable for, and we've cautioned them, and some residents don't do it. They don't, they don't really have that option of doing that. In some places in the county, seal coating works well, and, but we just don't think it would set a precedent because there's, and look, we have all of our rural subdivisions seal coated already, and there just doesn't seem to be other miles or other locations where there are several residents who would like to be included.
There'd be no reason to not approve those as well, though. If it were to set, let's say, a precedent, or let's say because we did one, somebody did come forward and decide this was the great thing to do and would do it, there'd be no reason for us to oppose someone else doing it. Unless it was a particular case with some conditions, I guess, that the, that you felt it didn't warrant it.
Right. We feel that at this point, it's going to cost us, we will have to mill up. For example, if, if we do not take over the seal coating on Big Woods and Mount Vernon Roads, in the future, if they, if they are not able to maintain it themselves, in the future, we are going to have to mill it up. It's also another concern for us. So we would have to hire someone with a mill to come in and mill that up.
So at the hearing, we would be both deciding, first whether to do it at all-
Right.
And then, then also what the percentage are, percentage that they're paying and the percentage that we're paying. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I think you'd also have to decide how you're going to divide it up among the affected landowners, too. I know at Lynn County, I think Kathy just said was, they did it even, evenly, just dividing among those landowners. I could also see it based on frontage, could be based on assessed value. There are a lot of ways that it could be looked at, I imagine.
When, when the citizens petition for this to happen, can they set a ceiling of that they're not willing to go over this percentage of, of the share? I'm just wondering if-
Well, I think, I think they can say what they're willing to, to do in terms of what they're requesting, but ultimately, it's the board's decision. And I think if we enact one where they don't agree with it, I guess, I don't recall seeing in chapter 311, a, a clear, a clear statement as to, you know, whether there's an appeal process or any of that. I'd have to look into that to see, but I don't know what happens if all of a sudden they say, well, gee, that wasn't what we had in mind. And, and so I think, I would guess, and Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong here in your opinion, but it seems like what we're looking for is for them to fund this fully, at least over and above whatever we're paying for that road now, correct?
Right. That, that's the, how it was presented to, to me, that they would, they don't want to go into a long-term assessment. They just want to pay, because they have been paying for the seal coating themselves. They would like to pay one more time, what they have to, and they would like it to be incorporated.
So they were willing to go to 100%? They were proposing the 100% they would pay for it?
Well-
This time.
I gave, I told them this could be an option for you all if we consider this as a secondary road assessment district.
Okay. They didn't propose anything? What their petition that they provided you, they didn't say that what they'd like or what they wanted to do, or what they were offering, I guess?
I took language from the code of Iowa, or they, and that's what's in the petition, that up to the 50% determined, determined by the Board of Supervisors.
But, no, I was going to say, it's not up to 50%. It was between 50 and 100. It had to be a minimum 50.
I think you meant up to 50% county cost.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
So if the seal breaks down in a year, then what? Then is it, does it all come, when it has to be redone, if this, let's say this winter or the next winter is especially hard, who bears the brunt?
So this winter, that would be these residents' concern? Because we haven't accepted it in two hour-
Well, even if we had, you're probably gonna-
Yeah, I'm just saying-
After it's seal coated by us?
Correct.
Then it'd be, it's like any other seal coat.
It's ours.
We have to go out and patch it.
Okay.
And we assess it actual dollars based upon what, what it costs us to do that? Is that correct? That was my understanding.
Well, no. So once, once this assessment, for example, let's, well, in either situation, whether it's paid for upfront or it's an assessment district, it becomes part of the county system.
Okay. So they're looking at, if I'm understanding this correctly, a one-time investment, they'll write the check, come to us, and then from here on out, it's ours.
Right. That's how all the assessment districts work in Iowa.
So, so when I think of like a Smith district, right, that this sort of feels a little bit like that, that assessment is annual. So I'm, I'm a little concerned, I'm a little concerned that it's a, it's a one-time payment and we've got a long-term, not to say it's a ton of money, right? I understand that.
Right.
But there is some precedent and there is some-
Right. For example, if you look at, for example, improvements like Lynn County, where they're actually putting down several inches of asphalt.
Yeah.
The asphalt's supposed to last for 20 years, 25 years. So there's not really supposed to be much maintenance or, or, excuse me, of course, there'd be routine plowing and that, that type of maintenance, but as far as roadwork being done, there, there would be minimal, just like us paving a new road or us seal coating a road. We expect it to be minimal amount of maintenance, but at some point, we need to reseal coat it, we need to resurface it, but it does become, as part of the county system then, once it's done.
Okay. One-time payment kind of starts the clock, and from then on, it's ours after-
Right.
My, my understanding-
You're paying us to take it.
Yeah.
Is, and you're, Kathy, your read of the statute was that you can't continually assess-
I don't believe so. My, the Lynn County engineer told me, once, once we do this, have set this district up, it's our road.
I'll research this one.
Okay.
Because my understanding was that we could continue to, but I'll, I'm not, you know, arguing that point right now.
Sure. Yeah, I'd be interested in that, man.
Yeah.
I think generally, it sounds like the, there's a number of residents on that stretch that it makes sense to do, to try to do something, but at the same time, there is a little bit of precedent that I'm intrigued by.
I'm wondering if it would be beneficial-
We just want to make sure we get the first one right.
Yeah, yeah.
Sets up, sets up how others will go.
Yeah.
Would it be beneficial to us to have a, I don't know, work session or something else beforehand to get all of our questions addressed, though, before we go into a hearing and then try to work?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think that would make sense. And I think, just so that nobody misunderstands Kathy's point about setting a precedent, I don't think Kathy's saying this wouldn't be kind of a precedent here in Blackhawk County.
Right.
But, but I think Kathy's saying that it's not a precedent in the state of Iowa. We've had at least one other county do this.
And the floodgates didn't open up in the other counties, I think, is, is the other point.
Yeah.
People aren't usually jumping up at, at the door to pay a little more voluntarily.
What was the timeline? Or were you, or maybe your, the residents, when they contacted you, did they have any timeline in mind, or this is just kind of approaching it for future?
So ideally, we think, we think the road needs to be seal coated again. Like I said, it needs to have two to three to four years of layer built up to hold it over for several years after that. So we're thinking next summer, 2024.
But it has to come, you said October 1st was the-
So we talked about that with my Trynance, and we felt that to put it into like your annual program or a five-year plan, that's, that's kind of a deadline of October 1st. annual program or a five-year plan, that's kind of a deadline of October 1st, so that it is able to be put into a construction plan. This type of work, seal coating does not go into our construction plan. This is... Seal coating is really considered a maintenance treatment, so we thought we could just put it into our professional services, and with your allowance, we probably could just waive that October 1st deadline that the Code of Iowa talks about, because it's really not the same type of project.
On that point, my opinion was, is that because of the fact that, you know, if everybody is on board with this, to pay it on time, you know, I perceive that that October 1st deadline was to protect the taxpayers in case they had objections. If you had everyone there, and they were for this, and they were for waiver of that deadline, then I believe the board can waive that deadline.
I was thinking...
Do they have 100% participation? No?
My understanding is Big Woods Road had 100% participation. I don't recall what the others were.
I would have to ask the opponent what the actual... If every single person actually contributed, I can't guarantee that every single person contributed. Enough people contributed to pay for the seal coating of that mile and a half.
I just don't want to get sideways with the language. If that October 1st, and you're saying we could perhaps bypass that because they're all on board, but if we aren't sure that they're all on board...
Provided they're all on board. That's my opinion about the October 1st.
I was thinking of just some other scenarios, thinking about, you know, some of the low-use bridges that we've decided to close over the years. With the half-mile, I mean, how do they decide with like a bridge, how is that determined? Like within, like, what do they decide the district, like, actually is? Like, because it doesn't make sense to be just half a mile of a bridge the other way. I'm just trying to think of...
You mean as far as that half-mile width?
Yeah. There was something that you couldn't assess properties that were more than half a mile away from...
Right.
Is that more than half a mile away from the project itself? Because I'm just thinking of like a bridge, you know, is, you know, just one spot of a road, but it serves the whole road.
I think it meant, so if you have a linear, like Big Woods is, if we're talking one mile long, you can go a half a mile wide on each side of that, and you can collect, assess people a half a mile on each side, so that you're not assessing people two miles over here to the east, and there might be, well, certainly, on many roads in Iowa, there would be a road closer than that.
Yeah. I'm still not getting my head around how you would determine that for...
A bridge.
Like a bridge, it's just one section of a road, and clearly, more than, you know, a half a mile of the road uses the bridge, and so I'm just... I know, it's just a scenario.
Yeah. So far, certainly in this county, and in many counties that I've heard of, we're not assessing people for bridges, because they are generally very expensive. Maybe that would be an option for... We have closed bridges here and I, in the county.
Yeah. Yeah. Real popular, I bet.
You had also mentioned that there was about 18 miles currently...
Right, of sealed coated road.
Yep.
Right.
Is there, maybe perhaps by the next work session, would you be able to identify? You had said that some of those, you have no idea why we're still... They've just been... We've been doing it for as long as we've been doing it, and so we continue to do it. Could there be a scenario where we take two miles out of that program, because it doesn't make sense for us to continue to seal coat it, and/or does that open up a whole other can?
So when we unseal coat something, that means we have to come and mill it all... We have to mill up all that existing. For example, the one-mile road, we'd have to mill up probably three inches of seal coat, and that will cost us money to mill that up. We then have to turn it back to gravel road.
So it's cheaper?
There are some costs to doing that, and why I, when I say I don't know how these roads got sealed coated in the first place, I don't really know, but they are, and there is a cost for us to return them to gravel. There are... If we're able to... We are able to plow them as a seal coated road. We've managed to do that. So at this point, I'm not advocating that we should return any roads to gravel that are seal coated.
Okay. Good. How do we come up with a good Q and A? And, you know, I'm sure we'll all have more questions, too, but I was going to say, and we'll all have time to get some of those answers back to us, I guess.
So I will find out more about the long-term... What happens in the long-term with the district, and what, for example, what Lynn County, when the assessment ends, or if it goes in perpetuity, I'll find that out, and you can check on something as well, Mike.
You bet.
Are there any other particulars you want me to check on?
No, I'll check that... You said there's a link.
Yeah. Go to Lynn County, the engineer. Look for secondary road or...
I'd just like to see what their other...
Yeah.
What their uses of this are, if we're, you know...
They have a lot more rural subdivisions than we do in Blackhawk County, and so some of them, some of those are not paved, and as development occurs in a county, the residents want improvements. They're building expensive homes on these gravel roads, and they want those to be upgraded. So that's what a lot of Lynn Counties are.
You sent the presentation last night, too. There might be some direct questions from that, as we review that again. You sent that to us, I know, last night, yesterday.
Yes, I did send you a petition and this PowerPoint, which I changed just a tiny bit, but please, if you have any questions, let me know.
Okay. I'll get something scheduled, and whenever everybody feels like you're ready or we're ready to. We need to have that... I guess we don't need to have that. I was going to say, for budget discussions or whatever, you need to kind of put it in your five-year plan, you mentioned, but...
Right. We would put it in a professional service for seal... We pay for seal coating out of professional maintenance, professional services.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. All right. Moving on to item nine, any reports or information from the board?
I have three things. The first is in regard to Consolidated Communication and the Oversight Board. I still would like to hear separately from MediaCom or Motorola and Raycom in regard to the services they could provide us. Number two, last week, I met with a committee. There were five of us, Michelle, County Attorney Tryon, and Amanda and Judy Flores from Dispatch, and we discussed the potential of making Dispatch its own county department. Based on our input, Mike is going to come up with a draft 2080 agreement that the committee will review again, and maybe we'll, you know, there's a potential we'll bring a recommendation to the board. I don't know if it's possible or not. I'd like to see it as a standalone department. I've always felt that the employees of Consolidated Communication have been treated like the redheaded stepchildren of the county. They're county employees. We take care of their benefits. We handle human resources for them, and I've heard elected officials say, well, they're not even county employees. Yeah, they are. I mean, our union, they're under our union contract, so that's...
Is there anything particular, like you felt that that... Because I said they are county employees.
Yeah. Yeah, you can't deny it. They're county employees.
I meant, so is there something that we could do to make them feel better about? I mean, what has it been in particular that they are...
I think just simply us talking about this is probably reassuring to them. And the way I view this draft 2080 agreement that Mike's coming up with, it just formalizes what we're already doing. So, but, you know, we'll take a look at it. We'll bring something to the board.
And I'm looking at probably, possibly, at this week, probably early next week on that for draft.
So would it be something, I mean, you say something similar to what our departments are now? Have we ever done like official action for those departments, and this would be something separate, or...
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, with our other departments, it gets complex in that some of our departments have an autonomous board. Some are elected officials, some are appointed officials. This would be more along the lines of a department that has an appointed department head.
And the real reason for the 2080 is simply because we're going to be providing services for other governmental subdivisions in the counties, so they would have to be party to that.
Right. Would they contribute financially?
Well, you know, that's something we talked about. In my opinion, where we are now is a good place. Where we are now is what I wanted to see 10 years ago when I was the police chief.
So we changed the structure, basically, but not the financing of it. Financing would be City or whatever.
Because it appears that where we are now, who came and talked to us? Tom Jones. We're doing what they're doing without a... We don't even need any MA levy. We're already doing what they're doing in regard to how we pay for Consolidated Communication. Some of the mayors don't like it. No fairness is a matter of perception. I've said that once, I've said it 100 times, but I'm not... We also talked about the potential of maybe someday, us as a body of supervisors absorbing the cost of Consolidated Communication. I don't think we can... Chris brought up some good... We all had good points. I don't think we could afford to absorb it overnight. I think we'd have other services that we need to provide that would suffer, especially since the cost of Dispatch, of course, is increasing every year. So there is a lot to talk about, but at least it's a start.
So maybe when we get this agreement drafted, and your committee looks at it or uses it and whatever, then you bring that to the board for a work session?
Yeah.
So we see what it is that you're at least looking at before you...
And if we like what we see, I would guess the next step would be for us to take that to the Oversight Board and have them look at it. It might be a starting point to where we get financially. So the last item I have is on January 4th, I'm having a meeting with representatives from the Cedar Falls Police Department, representatives from the Waterloo Police Department, and representatives from the Sheriff's Office, and representatives from the County Attorney's Office to talk about the property evidence, storage, processing, building.
Any progress on that?
Yeah, I mean, they're... You know, I had a great discussion with Mark Herbst and Lance Teisinger, and we decided at that meeting two weeks ago that, okay, let's push this out to a larger group now, but let's not get too large that the ship is too hard to steer. So we'll see where it goes. I'm optimistic.
Okay.
Like I say, I want a true joint facility that's beneficial for everybody at a location that's beneficial for all that are participating. And I truly, I mean, Cedar Falls may not, even if they don't want to get involved right now with the actual brick and mortar facility, I want their input, because what I would envision is eventually, they would come into the fold. I just want to... I want our law enforcement to have an adequate facility, but I also want what's in the best interests of our citizens and our taxpayers.
Just a question. Would there be interest to have discussion with Bremer County, with Buchanan, with, right, the surrounding counties? If we're going to explore building a facility large enough to house all, I'd be interested to maybe hear their input there and see if there's even some interest.
Davis brings up a great, great point, because I've been considering this for a while. Here is what I am going to do. I think eventually, we should be providing Dispatch services for all the counties surrounding us, not for free. I mean, they'd have to pay a fee, but we have the ability. I have no doubt we can do it based on their call volumes. We couldn't wholly absorb those calls. We'd have to add employees, but the cost savings would be beneficial for all, in my opinion. It's just, it's logical and sensible. My plan is to approach the Board of Supervisors in each of the counties that surround us, set a public comment during one of their meetings, and just throw it out there. Say, hey, and the potential is there to maybe provide those services, too. Geographically, we may be too far removed for them.
I think we might be moving into the course of deliberating something that wasn't on the agenda.
Gotcha.
Information before the board. You're not... No, it was just a question.
Yeah.
That's why I said work sessions are good. That'd be a...
It was such an involved, productive discussion.
It was a good discussion. There's no question about it.
Yeah.
I just wanted to stay legal.
Any other reports or information from the board?
Just a quick heads up on the rebrand. Board members in the next week or so, as well as the committee members, will get in three design concepts. They're not sort of full designs. They are just to give the designer some insights. Do we want a more creative, a more font-heavy, a more traditional feel? So just another point for some added input, and then, but that project is moving along.
And you said in the next...
That should be sometime next week.
Oh, next week. Okay. Thank you. Anything, Chris?
Nope.
Okay. Then I guess we move into item number 10, is the canvas. Resolution to certify the outcome of the votes cast in the city school election held Tuesday, November 7, according to Civil Code 50.24.
So moved.
Wait a second. Yeah, okay, thanks. Resolution, I guess. Grant, you want to go ahead and vote first?
No, I think you should look at them before you certify.
I kind of want to...
That probably makes sense.
How about the signature part?
This is my stack today.
Very simple.
Very simple, yeah. And I think the four of you can just get through, and please, so just...
She did. You can go ahead and pay them.
Background on why we do a second canvas for the city school elections is because we have three jurisdictions that are in multi-counties, and so each county does their own canvas like we did last Tuesday, and then because we're the control county for these three jurisdictions, now we have to bring everybody's abstracts of votes together and certify the district as a whole. So we have Dunkin', Union, and Hawkeye Community College. So I'll have you guys go ahead and do Hawkeye. And you can see all of the different races here. So you have District 1, 2, so on, and then these are all the different counties that make up that race. And so I put, this is the total page that'll just match us up with each individual abstract, and they should all be in order, so it should be pretty straightforward.
Okay.
And then I'll have you guys do Dunkin', Union.
District 1? I was going to say, here's District 1, but I wanted to see...
So I have them in separate races.
Okay. So I don't see one or the other.
Yes.
Eight, wait a minute. I'll talk to them.
Yes. These races, so you're really just looking at us again, but they should just all be written in order for you.
Yes.
208.
Yes.
Check the saw. 208.
So if you probably... Florida.
90.
We want to just read down, and then they'll just match up the abstracts.
District 2. Director, District 2. District 1, 4, 47. 70, 00. 64.
All right. I got 2, 0, 0, 85.
You're just looking at results? Or looking at totals?
You're looking at their abstracts, so you're just looking at...
Oh, I see. Gotcha, gotcha.
All right. All right. So, yeah, so 85, 3, 88 total. Okay, and then, so we got 87. Marquette, one write-in. Downs, 76, six write-ins.
3, 46, 31.
Yeah. Yep. So you've all... Yep.
And then Union, same.
All in 6.
Union is the same thing, except for some of these counties, their abstracts are a little bit differently. So I would, on these, I would just go down and do all of Union, all of Benton, sorry, got it. All of Benton County first, since they only have it one page, just so it makes sense. And then, so do all of Benton first, and all of Hawkeye.
Okay. Gotcha. All right, so we're on Benton. 56, 0, 53, 48. All right, on the Blackhawk, 170, 5, 16.
No, I just thought, we were done, and it was like, oh, yeah, that's right, we gotta sign. That's okay.
So are these already...
Oh, I guess, there are some write-ins, too.
Yep. So I just, yep, I just made it multiple.
Oh, yeah, there is. Yeah, 43.
You're good.
All right. So Blackhawk, 170, two write-ins. Blackhawk, yeah, 5, 14 write-ins. So Blackhawk, 170, two write-ins, Blackhawk, yeah, 5, 14 write-ins. District 3, 160.
Always another one.
0. District 4, 162 and 0.
Nice to breathe.
175 and 9.
Stuff to get going, I was just thinking.
All right, 1, 0. And 0 on one write-in.
I knew you talked about that.
1, 0 write-ins, 1 and 0 write-ins, and 2.
Well, it's the holidays, well, it's kind of like, yeah.
Yep.
This isn't exactly.
All right, Tama, 155 and 2, 0 and 16, 151 and 2. It was 0 votes, 16 write-ins.
Did you want to mention at the oversight meeting?
Yeah.
About, yeah.
District 1? Okay, got it. Got it. Okay? All right, we got 151 and 2, 149 and 1, and then 131 and 27.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no. Now you've thrown that name in mine, that is somebody, I know it looks like, yeah. Danny Lawrence. And he's probably going to be all like, all kinds of things coming at him.
Any assignments? For all of these?
Yep.
Oh, she's just giving us a few at a time, so she thinks we're not doing too many, she's trying to fool us. We know. So we're going to take a recess, it sounds like, or are we not going to, is that right?
Oh, sure.
I meant, I think that's one we were scheduled.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Unless Amanda says no, unless somebody says they got a mail, you know.
Dan, where'd you send your kids?
At my office.
Oh, my God.
They'll wreck someone.
Tell them to shut the door.
Oh, my goodness.
They were pretty good.
They weren't bad. Eli, he, he gets fidgety.
Oh, yeah.
That's why I figured I better tell him to go to my office.
Sometimes they would be paying attention, watching, and seeing what's going on.
I noticed that at the beginning of the meeting, this is how it's going to be.
Yeah, he just, even, you know, the poor kid, even when he's sleeping, he's constantly moving.
It's going to be tough, yeah. No, relax, yeah.
All right.
I know, I've been in cities where you send them outside.
And here's, they're homeschooled, but they do, they do co-op, and I love how part of the school leadership is so involved in homeschool kids. One day, a couple weeks ago, Shane was being stubborn, and he refused to stand for the National Fledge of Allegiance. And that's fine, that's your right, I'll fight for that, right, I'm going to stand, but I told him, I says, when we stand for the Fledge of Allegiance, you're standing for the Fledge of Allegiance.
So you looked over? Funny.
It's your right not to, but you knock you right in.
Well, it's. I didn't realize that, somehow I missed it, reviewing this.
I thought this was just going to be approval.
That's all I knew, I knew as soon as Grant said, is he, I was like, yes or no?
Well, they've all been canvassed, they just have to be accumulated in the control counties.
See, if we see, yeah.
Oh, recess?
If she does her certification, I thought, yeah, then that's only good for everybody.
Yeah. We had to, we had to buy those precincts across county lines, right? Yeah, all right. Makes a little bit of sense without getting.
With Hawkeye, Hawkeye, 15 or 19 counties, and. We didn't do anything, why do we have to sign?
You don't have to sign. I was saying, I have to. Did you get a call yesterday?
Lynn let us certify before we had it done, so, come on.
It's just the Scott.
What's the holdup?
Well, she called me, but.
I thought he may be gone today, I can, he's got his calendar in the picture.
I ended up talking to her first, I guess. Yeah, I, it was kind of intriguing. I was going to say, we haven't, it's certain.
Do the certification and recess, and Grant, you as a first, at that point? That way we can.
Yeah.
It doesn't tell you exactly how.
Grant, is it, can we go ahead and take a recess, or do the certification, then recess?
Do you want to take a vote now and then?
And then recess?
And then we'll do our recess, and then back at 11?
Sounds like an excellent.
Super, thank you. All right, I guess we'll just dig right in?
Yep.
All right. Super, we have a motion in a second? Roll call, roll, roll, please.
I'm that gavel.
Yeah.
We're going to take the vote for the resolution, thank you.
And I'm sorry, who was the, was that, Davis, did you move that?
They did earlier.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Sure. Whatever, yeah.
I think it was.
It was, I think, the two of you.
Okay.
Please answer, as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Velka?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes, thank you. So we are going to take our recess now, we have a continued, the closed session, go into the closed session, I guess, at 11 o'clock, if that works for everyone, so, okay, great, thank you very much, we'll see you at 11.